So, welcome to the Brolin Select Board Meeting. Tonight is Monday, November fifteenth. We continue to meet virtually in light of the COVID pandemic, nineteen pandemic. Let's see. Call to order at seven o'clock. Our announcements remain the same. Meetings of the Brolin Select Board generally recorded for transmission on both the Brolin Cable Television Access Channel and YouTube. Your voice, image, and or phone number may be recorded. All right, so I'll move that back out of the way. So first up, we've got one, two, two sets of meetings, minutes to review. The open session on November eighth and then right behind it on November ninth, our police chief finalists.
Excuse me, Peg, there's also November first.
Oh, all right. Thank you, Margaret. Appreciate that.
I think it was all, I don't know, was there November ninth in the folder?
Yes, November ninth was in the folder.
All three were in the folder.
Yeah.
And November one just wasn't approved at your last meeting.
Right.
Before town meeting.
I didn't. I read the November one for several times, like, was I at that meeting? Do I remember that meeting? And at one point clicked, oh, yeah, I was, I remember that one.
Yeah, all three of them are in there.
I only saw the two. Maybe I checked before they were all in there.
It was a, it was a short one. Do you want to hold that one then, Chris, until you can have?
I don't care. It's up to you guys.
Right.
If you're okay with it, I'm sure it's fine.
Okay. All right.
I'll make the motion. I'll make a motion to approve all three sets of minutes.
And I'll second it.
All right, so motion, a second, hearing, no further discussion. Stoneeye.
Hawkins Eye.
Keith Eye.
All right, here we go. Okay. I've lost my agenda. Next up is scrolling, scrolling, scrolling. Correspondence. Mrs. Nardowitz, have we received any?
Yes, so Mr. Mitchell from Highland Street emailed the town twice regarding activity, construction activity near his house at Duncan Bombs property. His primary concern was dirt being trapped into the roadway. So we have forwarded that correspondence to the appropriate local authorities, building commissioner, planning board, because it's a two lot subdivision, and the highway superintendent. So they're all, oh, and the police chief. So we're all, they're all aware of the issue. But again, it's, I've sent it off to planning board in case they have conditions in the, in the subdivision approval that requires them to keep a neat and tidy entrance and exit from the property. The next is, is just a continuance of the high, the trucks speeding on Highland Street. At the Traffic Safety Advisory Committee meeting last week, and I'll get more into this in my TA report, Fred reported that they have put a thirty mile an hour speed limit sign on Highland Street. Police and highway are also working together to get the mobile LED speed radar signs set up and put them around in different places in town. So they'll, one will likely end up there right, right from the get go. So those are the two pieces I have.
So Margaret, on the thirty miles an hour, I know that, oh, boy, when we had a discussion two months ago, I think it was like fifteen miles an hour up to the railroad tracks and then thirty after that, is that still the same?
I think that was in the agreement for the earthworks permit for one of the properties that's under construction up there. I don't think that's the general speed limit for that road.
Okay, okay.
But that's actually one of the problems is that even if the trucks that are hauling earthworks are behaving at fifty miles an hour, that's no longer a majority of the trucks that go up and down that road.
Yeah, yes, yeah. We had a, we had a broader discussion about trucking activity in town. I'll talk about that in my TA report.
All right. So moving down to general public comment, we have two folks in the audience. Anything Ms. Poland or Ms. Tarian to bring up at this point right now? You can see both of them are probably doing this. All right. So Margaret, thank you for the email. Obviously, chief and his crew are needed elsewhere. And since the Sennies are not here and the Brolin Boylston School Committee is not here yet, do we want to jump down and just go right down the list? So we'll start with your TA report, kind of keep moving. Or do we want to circle back to it and start with old business?
If the, if the board is fine with skipping down to that and starting with that, I think I can squeeze that in before the school gets here.
Okay.
All right, so for my TA updates tonight, I just want to report on the Nishoba Valley Regional Dispatch District. The dispatch negotiations have been ongoing and we believe that we're very, very close to an agreement. It's a fair and reasonable agreement, we believe, we've come to. So as soon as we can make the information public, I'm going to be happy to share that with you. Also, simultaneously with the district, there has been a search for the executive director that's been ongoing. Interviews have been held and those who have been conducting the interviews have reported that they have a very top notch candidate that they're, they're working with to to try to come to an agreement on an employment contract. So things are moving along there. It's, it's looking good. I know June could attest to the fact that we're still trying to sort out the finances at the district. But overall, it looks like things are moving along there pretty well and we should not expect to see spikes in the current, current fiscal year. Make sure of that. Traffic Safety Advisory Committee updates. So I'm just going to hit on a couple of, couple of key points. First of all, the board established the Traffic Safety Advisory Committee back in 2020 and the group had a discussion the other day about composition and membership. There's going to be a proposal coming before the board, a recommendation coming before the board to remove the building commissioner from the composition and add an at large member. There are currently no at large members, residents in the community. This would allow some community represent, representation. Building Commissioner, really, because most of what we talk about is inside the public way, his jurisdiction is fairly limited anyway. Okay, street sign request form updates. The board approved the street sign request form. I believe that might have been in 2020 as well. So the Traffic Safety Advisory Committee is proposing, and I'll pass along the recommendation, that there are three approval sections, one for police chief, one for fire, and one for highway, that those be combined and put into a Traffic Safety Advisory Committee recommendation. So just kind of a condensed recommendation and then it would come before the board. Route sixty-two corridor project planning updates. I know I've mentioned this in past meetings, but CMRPC is working on a Route sixty-two corridor study. We should have that product by late winter, early spring. This is going to provide some very, very helpful guidance with respect to what the town might consider to be priority infrastructure projects along Route sixty-two. I'm not just, not just plain infrastructure projects, but traffic safety projects as well and pedestrian safety. On the trucking issue, we had a couple of pending street sign requests for Highland Street and Carter. I think one was off the Randall in Highland. Those, the street sign requests that were submitted by, submitted by Mary Porter are still pending, but the Traffic Safety Advisory Committee requested that she circulate a citizen's petition to the neighborhood to make sure that everyone would be okay with street signs in the locations that she's proposed. So she's working on that. And the reason for that is because the houses are so close to the intersection. We want to make sure that the residents are comfortable with having street signs added there. And then finally, there are a couple of other things, but the other big one was the traffic safety bylaws, the Jake Brake bylaw. I haven't had an opportunity yet, but I do have a few sample bylaws that I'm going to circulate to the Traffic Safety Advisory Committee and they'll do a preliminary review of a bylaw and talk with some key stakeholders in town who actually operate trucks and who could weigh in from a professional standpoint on imposing that. The next thing I have is night, South Street Bridge. So Fred, and I'm going to let Fred elaborate on this when he meets with the board, but just kind of a high level overview, Fred and I met with VHB engineers on Friday, I think it was Friday morning, and at the Highway Barn. We met with a bridge engineer and we met with another civil engineer, who's her program manager, about a number of things, most importantly, around the South Street Bridge that Maston has indicated is, I don't want to say failing because I don't want to be an alarmist, but it has deteriorated to the point that we need to do something. So we talked with the engineers about putting a proposal together that would encompass an application to the Maston Shared Streets Program, an issuance for bids for contractors, of course, design and engineering for the bridge, and then construction oversight. So it, kind of a package, a package thing where they would be able to provide primary oversight with the bridge reconstruction. Another really big piece of bridge reconstruction, of course, is local permitting, especially wetlands, Nepalese permits and things like that. So they would be, they would be overseeing all of that. Chapter ninety funds, again, I think I've mentioned this to you before, chapter ninety funds could be used to fund portions of this project. So Fred and I agreed that we should pursue the project, understanding that a new small bridge program is going to be opening up very soon. We want to move on this project and get the design and engineering off the ground as soon as possible so we can avail ourselves of the, of the grant and, and get the project done sooner rather than later.
Do we have a sense of ballpark? How much is in chapter ninety and how much we're thinking of pulling from that to do this?
My, my thought on the chapter ninety piece, as soon as we get the proposal, we'll have a better idea. We should have that in a week. But my thought was, let's get rolling, pay for maybe phase one of the design work from chapter ninety and then let the, the grant kick in if we're eligible for the grant, because the grant will cover engineering and construction. So so we'll, we'll get the proposal and share it with you as soon as we receive it. The next item is nineteen Carter and the earmarked, the budget, the state budget earmark that nineteen Carter received for Berlin Senior Center. So we've been back and forth with the state Executive Office of Human Services. And what they are recommending is that the town put on letterhead relinquishment of, or put on letterhead that it relinquishes the grant that's awarded to nineteen Carter. One of my biggest concerns here with this particular grant is, there's a few, but not only that it's awarded to a private entity for Berlin Senior Center, so we wanted to make sure that it was clear that the separation of government and nonprofit was clear, but also that grants come with heavy administrative burdens. And I was not comfortable in the least administering or managing a grant being awarded to another entity. So the answer to this, as far as the state's concerned, is that the town put on letterhead that it relinquishes the grant to nineteen Carter and it puts it all in nineteen Carter's hands. So I wanted to bring that to your attention. And then the next item is, oh, the next item is really good news. So today we've got, we got notice on the CPA State Trust Fund Distribution. Berlin is one of only seventeen towns in the Commonwealth that received a hundred percent state match. Two hundred eighty-one thousand, two hundred fifty dollars is one hundred percent, is a one hundred percent match of the town's surcharge revenue. So that is huge and there was a long period of time, years, where state matches didn't come anywhere near a hundred percent, never mind fifty percent. So this is, that's really good news. And then finally, the shared bucket truck. Mike Ward, town manager, town manager in Clinton and CMRPC and I met last week on the intermunicipal agreement for the shared bucket truck. We do have a draft in place and the intermunicipal agreement is going to cover all the facets of the town's sharing a bucket truck. It's going to cover the funds that are going to have to be received by the participating communities to contribute toward maintenance, insurance, testing, licensing, and other registration and other costs. It's also going to leave open the possibility for additional towns to join. Should we not make use, we could actually ask, or other towns could petition us to join the intermunicipal agreement. And we could share the truck more broadly. So I will be sharing that draft intermunicipal agreement with you for your review and comments. And then I will have a follow up meeting with, with Mike Ward to go over some of the details on that. And the last thing I want to note is today's fire on Gates Pond Road. I had an opportunity to go down there and visit when they were just, when they were cleaning up. It was, it was near the end. But my thanks, you know, go out not only to the Berlin Fire Department and Chief Clark, but but to, but to the mutual aid teams that came in from Bolton, Boylston, Clinton, Harvard, Hudson, Northborough and Stowe. So it was a very, very large operation and and I just, I want to express our thanks.
Absolutely. Hey, Margaret, question on the bucket truck. So that's just, you know, if Berlin needs the truck, we get the truck, Clinton needs the truck, they get the truck. Is there any, or has there been any talk to like borrow resources or something like that? You know, if it's a large job and, you know, we need like one more guy or Clinton needs one more guy.
Yeah, it actually leaves open in one of the sections that the towns could make a decision or decide to share resources, other resources in accordance with this agreement. So we could do that. But just to be clear, Berlin is the lead town on this. It's going to be garaged in Berlin. We're going to hold the account for the shared truck in Berlin. But yeah, those, those kind of options are in there.
Very cool.
Can I ask a couple of questions, Peg?
Oh, yeah, of course.
Okay. In reading the the Fire Marshal's report, it brought back a couple of questions that I had. One was on the solar farm on Randall Road. They agreed to pay the personal property tax?
They are still in arrears. They have a, they've paid a portion of their, the required portion of their personal property taxes to be able to have the ATB here at their case, but their appeal is still pending at the ATB. So we do have outstanding amounts due.
So it sounded like they're up and running?
They are up and running, yes.
Okay. And what about the, have you heard anything, an update from Bigelow Road Marijuana Facility?
I have not heard an update from Gabe and I should reach out to him. I hadn't, I, my mind's been on other things lately, so I hadn't thought about that. I'll reach out to Gabe and see where they're at.
Okay. Thanks.
Scott, any questions for Mrs. Nardowitz?
Not at the moment. I'll be okay.
Okay. Margaret, you good? Nice summary. Okay, all right. Thank you for that. All right, so zip it down. We still have time for, let me just check. Yep, they're not here yet. So we still have time before Brolin Boylston Committee, School Committee gets here. So for old business, we have member reappointments. Regular member Linda, never knew her name was Linda. Lynn Ryan through November of twenty twenty-five. Dennis Bartlett through November of twenty twenty-six and associate member Keith Susie also through November of twenty twenty-six.
Yes, they did tell me that in their ZBA meeting that they were all willing to continue in their role. So I would make the motion to approve.
I will second.
Excellent. Thank you for serving Lynn, Denny and Keith. Stoneeye.
Hawkins Eye.
Keith Eye.
All right. Thank you, ZBA. Appreciate all you do for us. All right. Zip and ride along down back to you there, Margaret, for town administrator notices of intent to appoint seasonal highway driver. I know it was on, it was off, it's back.
Yeah, it's back on.
It's back.
So this is to give you my notice of intent to appoint Kevin McCready of Littleton, Mass as a winter CDL driver at a grade seven, step six, twenty-five, oh, six an hour. This is the base wage for this seasonal position that was advertised.
Nice.
I will not appoint until all the pre-hire steps are completed.
So do you need a motion tonight or do you want to wait?
If the board's ready to.
I would like to do a motion to conditionally approve the hire or to waive the fourteen day waiting period. But if Margaret gets their pre-employment stuff completed.
Second.
All right, excellent. Thank you, Fred and company, for getting us full. Stoneeye.
Hawkins Eye.
Keith Eye.
All right, new driver coming it down. All right. So I see that Susan is here. Do we want to bring her up and start her early or wait until seven thirty?
We should probably wait for her appointment time as close to it as we can.
Okay, all right, we will buzz through some additional new business. So next up on the agenda is the Historical Commission appointments, two vacancies terms, the end of May twenty twenty-three and the end of May twenty twenty-two.
The Chair of the Historical Commission emailed the board on Wednesday, November tenth, noting that the Historical Commission voted unanimously on November tenth to recommend the Select Board's appointment of Carl Wickstrom and Janet Woodward for membership on the commission.
Yay.
Yay. And I know there is an order in which they are going to fill these vacancies.
On the folder, there was.
Yeah, there was something in the book. There's a chart. So let me see. See, Carl came in first. So Mary, can you tell us which, I can't read my sheet.
Carl Wickstrom would be through May thirty-first, twenty twenty-three and Janet Woodward would be through May thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. Okay.
Thank you.
Motion to appoint.
Second.
All right. Thank you again, Carl and Janet. Appreciate you. Stoneeye.
Hawkins Eye.
Keith Eye.
Yay. I like how our committees are starting to fill up. Makes my heart happy. All right. Moving down. Margaret, you tell me. The next one is Personnel Committee recommended FY twenty-three non-union COLA. Can we do the discussion in eight minutes or do we want to wait?
Uh, well, board's prerogative. I think that we could do the discussion in five minutes.
All right. All right, two notes. All right, we're up.
Mary, could you please promote Sue, Tarian? All right, on see. At the Personnel Committee's most recent meeting, the Personnel Committee reviewed the area CPI, which at that time was at four point one or four, four point oh percent for the Boston Cambridge Newton area. And it was even higher in the Northeast region at a four point six percent increase over the past twelve months. The Personnel Committee has historically referred, referenced the CPI in making COLA decisions the last two years, well, the year before last was an anomaly with COVID. But they did get back to that practice for FY twenty-two and recognizing the fact that four point one percent is would result in a very significant cost to the town, that the Personnel Committee voted unanimously on a two percent COLA for non-union, non-contract employees on the town's classification and compensation plan. So the total number of employees is approximately fifty and the total cost impact on the town's overall operating budget would be approximately thirty-five thousand dollars.
So you would like a motion to, or go ahead, Peg, if you have any, if you want to ask for any questions?
Yeah, I mean, I was going to ask for any questions or if I know, I can see there, Ms. Sue, she's all comfy and cozy on her couch, but didn't know if there was anything that she needed to add or if we have questions, we'll just toss them your way.
Not if I got it right. Did I get it right?
The thirty thousand dollar cost is just the cost of the COLA. It steps would be additional.
That's correct. That's correct. Sue, Sue is here also to talk about, I think you saw in the Personnel Committee email that Personnel Committee is continuing to talk about market rate, market rate adjustments for certain employees. They're also having a discussion on merit for some extraordinary work by select, by select employees. So they're, they just need a little more time to discuss those. This, this is strictly COLA for now.
I thought you were going to say for select board members.
Deserve merit.
Yeah.
There's merit there. There's merit there.
We don't do it for the money.
When I saw this, I somehow, I had remembered that we used a sort of a central mass CPI, but then I spent some time trying to find that such a thing and could not, because I, I think that there are times where central mass inflation is at a different rate than Boston, especially when it comes to housing prices. But since I couldn't find it, then maybe I misremember things and it just doesn't exist.
Worcester, Worcester is very, very difficult to find. It usually is in summary format as opposed to the data that we see here. So, and it's not, I don't think it's very far at all from the Boston.
Right, and I think it might be lower than Boston, but I still think it's probably higher than two. So it's as much sort of procedural questions, anything. I have no problem with the two percent.
Chris, questions for Mr. Tarian?
No, I, I agree. I think that they are in the ballpark. So I, I would make a motion to approve the two percent.
I would second.
All right, motion, a second, personnel. Thank you, Chris. Please, Sue, please tell Claire and Tommy and everybody else. Thank you. Stoneeye.
Hawkins Eye.
Keith Eye.
All right, two percent we roll and then obviously let us know about how many folks will need to hit four steps and the extraordinary work that folks do here for town. Margaret, you know what? You were just about right. It is, you did six minutes there, Margaret.
You did six. I don't know. Do you want to, you want to allow a little more time for the budget memo or do you want, what do you, what do you want to do next?
If you can do the budget memo in four minutes or less, that was three, anyone noticed.
I do a budget, all right. I do a budget memo every year. I try to do it hand in hand with the Finance Committee. They have not reviewed this yet. They're going to be meeting this week on this, but I did want to bring this forward because it notes the two percent COLAs. We want to be sure that departments are clear on what we're asking them to submit for. Because we are seeing some rebounding in our non-tax revenues, in particular, meals and rooms tax, which has gone up fifteen hundred percent in one quarter over the last full year. We actually have already seen a last year, we budgeted forty thousand dollars, not knowing. I mean, we budget, we did it all, our budgeting when we were in the shutdown. So we budgeted forty thousand dollars, or that's what we projected. In the first quarter this year, in both categories, we have gotten a combined total of one hundred, one thousand, eight hundred fifteen dollars. So a major rebound in the hospitality industry, thankfully.
People are sick of eating out or sick of not eating.
Or staying in.
Well, yeah, and I mean, when I sit by the hotel, it's nice. I see a lot of cars coming in and out of that hotel at the Rotary, which is, is nice to see.
Yeah.
Right, right. And that is, you know, that is considered a recurring revenue source, short of going back into, please, no, I'm not even going to say it. We just hope that we're on this, an upward trend. So I did want to touch on a couple of those things in my budget memo. Otherwise, the expectations are pretty much what we set each year for departments when they're submitting their, their budget requests. For this year, I, I have asked for not more than a two percent, two and a half percent bottom line increase over the amounts that were approved at the May fifteenth annual town meeting. And that would be applicable in almost, almost all cases.
All right. Scott, you want to make the motion? You want me to?
Well, so I worry the timing to have this back by December sixth. So we're only like four months into this fiscal year and we're being able to project something that is more than eight months out before it takes effect. I mean, it's because by December sixth, they're not even going to have their November financials. So they'll have July, August, September. Maybe it's four months worth of financials for the year.
We wouldn't get second quarter until January, which is late. That would be late. So if, I mean, if the board would like us to consider bumping it, you know, moving it back another week or two, that might be good, but January is getting kind of late.
You know, I think we talked about how we needed to start things earlier, though, the last couple of years.
Yeah, I mean, I've talked, I'm also the one who pushes at the other end that we have to have all this stuff ready for the, the report and have it out in the mail in time. And so I'm just trying to figure what other things, because it is one of the And so I'm just trying to figure what other things, because it is one of those. I don't think you need every budget by December 6th to be able to do this stuff on time. But you also, if you gave people a January 6th, or let's say even January 10th deadline, you know, if they all waited to that deadline, that's just as bad. I don't know how you like, say that we have to have a majority of them here by then. And some might fall into place and some might be messier, but I just, I'd like to make sure these are thoughtful, because we seem to end up with a bunch of free cash, because I think we're all taking the market, more sort of worrisome approach when it comes to spending.
I think you probably do get.
Have out of necessity for the past couple of years. But, um, I mean.
Don't you get a majority of them in by the date, and then there are still some that are in later.
Yeah.
Or you have to send them back to be.
I'm happy to talk with the Finance Committee about pushing it back a couple, you know, a week or two. If that, you know, if that makes a little more sense.
I, I'd be all worried about like, does the week or two, like if we did December 20th instead of December 6th, do any of the department heads feel they would have more information in that two-week period that allow them to do better budgets? Because if they're not gonna have any more fiscal stuff for a better sense of what the year is gonna look like in fiscal year 23, then maybe that two weeks doesn't really buy us anything.
That's probably true.
Well, I'll leave it to the board. If you'd like me to bring back, you know, a request to the FinCon to switch it around. I, I don't have a problem with it. I, I prefer not to get into January, because then if we have a deadline in January and we still have departments, boards and committees lagging.
So I, I think as a policies endpoint, I think the letter is great. And I, I will leave it up to Margaret, understanding the concerns that I want the department heads to have some great information and FinCon to be able to get their jobs done. And if that results in that being able to push out a week or two, that's fine. But if the result of those conversations is December 6th, that's still good. I don't want to stand in the way of that. I think it's more important to get the letter out, because then no matter what the date is, the department has the maximum amount of time to do things.
So you're okay with the letter, Scott?
Yep, yep.
I would make a motion to approve the letter.
I will second.
All right, motion to approve the letters. Stoneeye.
Hawkins eye.
Keith eye.
All right.
We will keep that in consideration on submission deadlines.
Thank you. I appreciate that. All right, so we are at 7:32. So, uh, up, and here she comes. For our 7:30 appointment, Berlin Boylston Regional School Committee Visit and Updates. Hello, Susan Henry.
There, how is everybody tonight?
Very well, yourself. Thanks for coming.
It's nice to be here. I, I was pleased on the agenda. I think didn't it say that the school committee is here for a visit?
Yes. Visiting updates.
We'd like to visit again sometime. We'd like to actually keep these conversations going over the course of the year. So we appreciate having time with you tonight. My colleague Lori just texted me. She had a family emergency. She's unable to be here. So she sends her regrets, but I am fine covering her, what she was gonna talk about, so we'll just proceed.
All right, Susan, floor is open to you.
All right. Well, thank you for your time tonight. We would, I, I must switch over to I now. We, I wanted to tell you a little bit about our school committee context this year, our goals and this upcoming regional school committee election. In particular, we, we have a relatively new committee this year. It's kind of like, it's almost like a brand new committee. There are three new people just since June and September. Julie Lee has joined us, which is exciting to me to have her on the committee, and two new people from Boylston just in September. And then we have one other member from Berlin who is still under a year. So really, 2/3 of the committee is really still new to the committee and learning their roles, right? There's a lot to understand. What we've seen is that people who've been on the committee for a while often end up saying, I had no idea what was involved with the school committee. I had no idea what we were doing. So we're putting in extra supports to ramp everybody up sort of quickly this fall as much as we can. But the committee also brings new energy and new commitments, particularly around community engagement and communicating with the, with the public. So that we have some goals that we've set in place this year, which have to do with re-engaging with some of the school groups who used to be regularly attending school committee meetings and presenting to school committee meetings. The pandemic has sort of broken that apart, right? We have, we don't see them so much anymore. So we're talking about reaching back out to them and re-establishing some flow of communication with these groups of PTOs and CPAC and you and FinCom and some of the people that we should be talking with. So we're trying to bring that back into play. We're planning to have some public forums and/or surveys this year to solicit more regularly input from the community and then having the superintendent be part of those so that he gets to know the community, community gets to know him better. And we have a January governance workshop where we will work specifically on coming to agreement as a new group on a vision, a longer-term vision for what community engagement should look like with the school committee. And then we have this regional school committee election outreach. And when I became Chair in September, and one of the first things I wanted to tackle was this election, which has been problematic, right? We missed the first election in 2020, due in part to shifts in committee makeup and the arrival of the pandemic. And then we tried to have a special election and submitted a home rule petition to the legislature, but last year, they took on nothing but COVID things. So we get pushed way back in the queue. And so then this, this fall, we just officially took that off the table and voted to really focus our energies on having a successful high engagement election in November 2022, because now we're part of the state biennial elections as a regional school district. So we know that there, I've had a lot of conversations with Eloise and Don Porter over in the Boylston Town Clerk's Office and with another district on which our regional agreement was based to try to figure out, how does this election work? How, how does this all come into play? And so what I ended up putting together was this election timeline, which I believe you have. And this, this is not really the community version of the timeline. It's, it's like a user's manual. It's really intended for all of us, the town clerks, and now we have an appointed district clerk as part of the school committee. And the intent of this document was to try to detail, what are all the steps in this process and who does what when? So the, the idea here was to avoid any mishaps. Avoid any confusions if we can. We probably will bump into things that we, you know, still are unaware of, since it's our first pass at this. But the town clerks have approved it. They've seen a couple of iterations of this. Our, our legal counsel looked at it in, the school committee approved it. So I think this is our best shot for entering this process so far. We are, we now also have an election subcommittee on the school committee whose charge is really to figure out how to engage the community and get the word out. And Eloise did had some important, both of them have had important conversation with me about the need for public education around this regional school committee election, because there are so many new aspects to this foreign, very foreign. And so I wanted to talk with you a little bit about that tonight and to solicit your input if we, if we have time. The first thing is that the, there are several things that make this November 2022 regional school election unique. The, the, it's the first election since we regionalized in 2018. Now there's one committee, not three committees, make all those decisions K through 12. And so this is the first time we're voting for this regional school committee. This is the only time that all six seats on the committee will be vacant in the same election. That's really something to wrap your head around when you think about it. And the, the intent is here now, you've formed then a brand new committee that will have staggered two and four-year terms going forward. Three seats from, filled by Berlin residents, three by Boylston. This is the first time that both towns are voting for all six seats. In the past, Berlin voted for the Berlin representatives and Boylton, Boylston voted for the Boylston representatives. Now, Berlin representatives will vote for the Berlin and the Boylston representatives and vice versa from Boylston. So that means that Berlin needs to get to know the people from Boylston who are running and vice versa. They really, it's a regional election. That, that has all kinds of implications for how you run for school committee, how you take out nomination papers, all that kind of stuff. So this is new and even, even the ballot is going to look different, right? So there's gonna be, you know, vote for two, and there'll be Berlin and Boylston people listed. No, sorry, there'll be Berlin people. And then there'll be, you know, for, vote for two for two-year terms, vote for one for a four-year term. And then over in Boylston, vote for one for the four, one year, two-year terms, vote for two people for the, so there are like four sections to choosing your, your committees. It's, it's gonna look different, it's gonna feel different. And I think what's gonna be very important is, is this is gonna be the first time the voters will need to go to the polls twice to complete the local elections. Right? They'll need to go to the annual town meet, town elections. And then they need to show up again at the biennial state election to do the school committee part. So that's, that's a whole nother thing as well. So on top of all that newness and having to get people, both the voters and candidates running for the school committee to become familiar with how this is all different. It's important to recognize that in this next, say, four-year period after November 2022, there are going to be some really significant, significant business coming before the school committee. And so who fills those seats becomes very important, in my view. First, the school, the district and the school committee will work together to develop a brand-new district improvement plan. That's a five-year visionary statement, that, a policy statement that sets the direction for the school district for the next five years. And obviously has implications for annual goal settings as well as budgetary decisions. And then the current superintendent's contract will expire in 2025. And the current contract with the Teachers Association, the Berlin Boylston Education Association expires in 2022. We're in the process of negotiating for a new contract that will also expire in 2025. And so that contract defines agreed-upon working conditions, salaries for teachers, counselors, librarians, nurses. It's, it's a significant contract. And those personnel expenditures account for the largest portion of the district's budget. It's, it's all those three things kind of co-occurring in the next term of these, this new school committee. Means there's gonna be a lot of meat on the table in, for this new school committee. We, we don't know if that school committee will carry over any long-term knowledge from experience on the committee prior, or whether everybody sitting in those seats will be brand new. That would be another another kind of need, right? We need to make sure there are people who, who can be, that the systems are in place to support those people into entry, because we don't know who's gonna fill those seats. We also want a good, robust race for those seats, right? We want to, we want people to be out there talking about why they want to fill that school committee chair and what they aim to do, why their skills and knowledge would be a good fit, or why they would work well as a team on that school committee. So there's a, there's a lot, there's a lot to wrap your head around in this next election. And we're just at the front of beginning to articulate this. We've, this election subcommittee is developing a frequently asked questions document that's aimed at answering the most predictable questions. And some of them are hard to answer because they're a little complicated. So we expect that frequently asked document, that information on that to get kind of widely disseminated. And we expect it to be a living document, because we're going to hear frequently asked questions. They're probably not on that list yet, and we will add them. So I, one of my interests tonight is to hear from you in terms of whatever, you know, questions you may have based on what I've talked about so far. But also, if you feel there are certain strategies or communication channels that you think we should be pursuing to, or, or groups that we should be engaging with in order to help educate the public and to get a vibrant pool of school committee candidates running. I'm interested in hearing those thoughts tonight, if you have the time to think with, think with us a bit. So I'll pass it over to you and look for your response.
So Susan, there's no way that it could ever just be Boylston people, correct? Or vice versa, it could ever just be Berlin people? It will always be an equal representation from every town?
Correct. And that's, that's one of the reasons I think they went to a biennial election in the first place. By mass general laws, you, you have a certain number of options for how you can have a regional school committee. And one of the ones that allows you, you to have, maintain equal representation on your school committee is to hold biennial elections like this.
Do we have, Margaret, Margaret or Chris, you probably know better than I, do we have a coffee talk in January? Because I'm, I'm looking at your well-written and well-planned out timeline here, Susan. So kudos to you. And you know, and right now we're in the October, December bucket for agreement, and then we'll start to move into the January, March, you know, here's the process. Usually every quarter, we have a, a coffee talk. It's an open forum. Folks come to us. We have things.
It's great. It's great. In fact, we've talked about trying to model, model that, that forum in our own forums. But if we could participate in one you're already having, that would be terrific.
Yeah. One on January 20th.
All right. Down, and I can get back to you on that, once we look at the calendar and, and what, do you know what time those usually are?
Usually around 6:30, I think.
Yeah.
That opportunity, that would be great.
Yeah. No, I, I, I agree with Peg. The, the timeline is very good. And the only question I've had all along was, you know, the people change on the committee. And how do you, who's gonna remind the district clerk when it starts time to get the ball rolling? Because people change.
We've, we've had that conversation, because we're worried about that too. I think, you know, you missed that deadline once, and boy, you don't forget.
You know what happens.
Well, we've got a couple of mechanisms. One is that we, we anticipate that the, we set it up this year, and we would encourage it to be continued to set up this way, is to place the district clerk position within the election subcommittee, and for the election subcommittee to become a standing committee. And then it becomes the committee's job to help, you know, to start every agenda by looking at this timeline and looking ahead and making sure we're prepared for what's coming down the road. We also know, based on conversations with this other district, that it becomes more routine and familiar going out. But the first couple of times through, it's, it's rougher. I, I think the other piece, you know, now we have this timeline, so this is, this becomes an important document to carry forward, right? So if everybody on the current committee is gone, and there's six new people sitting at the table, they still have this document to pull up, and the the assistant, the executive secretary to the superintendent will have some of those key dates that she will also remind the district clerk of, just in case. That's our backup system.
Yes, that's, that's what I would have suggested is, you know, the assistant to the superintendent, she's gonna have to say, hey, it's time.
It's three weeks before time. That's what I want to hear. I don't want to wait till the deadline.
Exactly.
Yeah, so we, we have been thinking about that, thank you.
Scott, anything, I think I interrupted you, apologies on that.
That's fine, I'm just confirming that we're not contemplating primaries then, or or early elections. In other words, that anyone who's filed a nomination paper was just running in the final election in November.
That's my, yes.
Yeah, no, go ahead, Scott.
I was gonna say, having a primary would make things infinitely more complicated, and I just wanna make sure that we're consciously skipping that stage and not accidentally skipping it.
Well, I, I hope so, because nobody mentioned that to me in all my conversations.
And we've had so many uncontested elections, I think the idea that we'd have like ten people running for one school board position. Maybe that'd be a nice thing, and since we have six openings, that's unlikely to happen at this round.
Yeah, I, I think, um, I'm, I'm hoping that people recognize the importance of this next round. We have some really important decisions coming up in this, that new committee will have in front of them. And I'm hoping that for some people, they'll be like, I wanna be in on that. So, and, and I'm hoping that those people will include current families, parents, but also seniors in our town, I mean, a third of our town is seniors. And there are plenty of people in the senior population who either had children in the schools or they have grandchildren in the schools, or they're, they're just interested in ensuring that they have a well-educated town.
Or work, work in a school district at some point.
Yeah, right, there's, there are lots of reasons why non-parent, non-current parents might also want to run. So I'm hoping that they'll, they'll see some opportunity in, in the kinds of things that are coming before the committee.
And so if people pick up nomination papers, they're picking up a paper for like a Berlin school board slot one, or slot two, or slot three, correct?
Well, you, you go, first of all, I, I get, I, I gather from this other district that most people go to their hometown clerk, and they take out nomination papers there. And they will take out for either a two-year position or a four-year position. In Berlin, we'll have two two-year positions and one four-year position this first round. And that's, that's all they have to indicate, I guess. But you can also take out nomination papers in Boylston, if you want to, if you're from Berlin. And you can collect signatures over there and submit them to, to Don Porter. And you can submit signatures over here and submit them to Eloise. But you can't submit a nomination paper with both those signatures on the same paper. Because our town clerk can only verify the Berlin signatures and the rest get tossed. Or the Boylston can only verify Boylston signatures and the rest get tossed. So, so my understanding, most go to their hometown and just get their signatures there.
Right, because if you went, if you were looking for a Berlin for your slot, and you went to the Boylston office to pull papers, you have to get Boylston town signatures for a Berlin slot.
Correct.
And you have to be a Berlin resident yourself.
That would be a little difficult, probably for some.
I mean, I, I think the, um, ultimately, you're, you're aiming to interest the voters in both towns, right? So I think, I think the way people probably will need to think about it is to say, I'm just gonna go get enough signatures to get on the ballot. And I can, the more simple way to do that is to collect them in your own town, you can collect them in both towns if you want to. But then when you go to campaign for the seat, obviously you want to campaign across both towns. So people get to know you. And I, I think the other thing that's important here that's different is that these six people now become their regional representatives. There's no longer such a thing as the Berlin representative on the school committee. They're all your representatives, because you're voting for all of them. So even though they live in Boylston, they still represent you, you voted for those seats. So that's another new thing to think about, right? Thinking about just our camp and their camp, and it's where.
So, so when I, as a voter, go into the voting booth in November, there'll be six slots for the school board that I'm voting on, three are people who live in Berlin and three are people who live in Boylston, but I'm voting on all six of them.
Correct, yeah, that's different, right?
I would, I would highly recommend that you do something like a, a coffee talk for the people who are running.
Yep, in both towns, yeah, definitely in both towns, having Berlin and in Boylston, yeah.
Yeah, I think, um, well, we're interested in getting some groups in these two towns to sponsor some candidate forums, because it, it could be a conflict for this school committee to do that, because some people are gonna be likely running. And so it's better for some other group to do that, either PTOs, I'd love to see a student, a student hosted forum. They, they raise questions, I think that'd be very interesting. But there are other groups in town too, who would run a, run a great series of forums, yeah. Other people involved in that part. So I think the school committee is gonna be very involved in the front part, where we're trying to just educate people on the process. But once the, you, the time comes when you can pull nomination papers, then I think we're gonna see a shift toward more of, of these get-to-know-the-candidate kinds of events.
So, I mean, we do have another meeting, but what I'm wondering, Scott, Chris, is do we have Susan come back in the beginning of January and kind of get her all prepped for coffee talk? And maybe put Susan on a rotating, you know, once a quarter, come back and visit? Because it kind of, it, it ties in nicely to your calendar, everything seems to be moving, you know, quarter by quarter. This way, you know, we're in the know, we can help you.
We'd appreciate that.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay, all right, so then what we'll do, when Margaret and I dive into the agendas, we'll pick a date in January. We'll let you know, see if it works for you, get you all set for that. And then we'll figure out how we can do coffee talk. And then, you know, definitely our powder house news, you know, might be able to help get the word out and stuff like that, so.
I know someone who works on that.
There you go, yeah, yeah.
That January twentieth coffee talk firm, that date?
I believe so.
Okay, all right, so I can put that out. I just wanted to respond briefly to one other thing, which, Margaret, you had sent a note about the lease. And just on a preliminary note, I did hear from the central office today. And the comment was that it's, it's largely great, fine, but there are a couple of line items, specific things around maintenance kinds of issues that we'd like to talk with you about rewarding. But they will be back in touch with you about those.
Awesome, great, thank you. Well, Susan, it was an absolute pleasure, thank you for coming, thank you for accepting our invite. Extremely informed of, more than, than I had any clue as to what was going on with the election, so thank you.
Let me know if any questions come up, you know, we will add them to the list. And I'll try to answer them, but we'll add them to our document, because I know questions are gonna bubble.
Absolutely, absolutely, it'll give us time to go through and stuff and for all of us to ponder. And then we look forward to working with you and hope everything is, you know, on the mend for your counterpart. And see you in January.
That's awesome, thanks so much, guys.
All right, so next up on the agenda, seven fifty, running a smidge behind is Matt and Chris Senni. Mary, if you could bring them up to the front to talk about the third modification of the development agreement.
Does Margaret wanna fill us in?
That's what I'm thinking, that, you know, Margaret can give us the reader digest of what we need to do, what we need to look at, and then go from there.
Okay, well, I wasn't here when the last modification was executed. So as far as process, I, I think that that requires a discussion. But as was explained at town meeting and in the summary below the article on the warrant, there were some deadlines that were scheduled to come up on December eleventh this year. And so the town group that we're talking to the Sennys, we all decided that it would be in the town's best interest, as well as the Sennys, to extend these construction deadlines out. So that's what, that's what the effect of this vote on this warrant article is. And that's why Chris and Matt are here to talk about the vote that occurred at town meeting and the third modification of the development agreement. Welcome, Chris and Matt.
Thank you very much, thank, thank you for putting us on your agenda tonight. We very much appreciate the town meeting vote on November eighth. The voters did approve a warrant article that actually had the full body of the proposed third modification of our development agreement in it. And it's broken down into two parts, the first part extends four dates by which we are supposed to have completed certain improvements in the town. And those dates were discussed with the working group that Margaret just mentioned. And the second part refers to River Run, which is the other property located about three thousand feet to the north of, of River Bridge. And there, we wanted to give the town an extension on the period of time it has to exercise an option to buy one of two developable parts of River Run for a dollar. And so the, the warrant article gave the town an additional four years to do that, to exercise. And the other part of the River Run section allows the select board and the planning board to switch or add to the areas that, uh, the town might apply that option to. And so the modification of the development agreement would provide that flexibility. But again, that would be in your board's decision-making as well as the planning board. So it introduced some flexibility. And just some background there, there are two developable areas, one is zone residential and could be developed as a home, a single-family home, that's the parcel that the town presently has an option to purchase for a dollar. And there's another parcel that's located closer up, uphill to Boundless Adventures, that the aerial adventure park, and that's a zone limited business and could be either a municipal building or, or a, a commercial building of some type. And we've been talking with this subcommittee about wanting to introduce flexibility so that if the town would prefer to have the other parcel for a municipal purpose or perhaps even both parcels, if that came, came about through our negotiations, we wanted the voters to sign off on that. So all of that is embodied in the third modification, which the voters approved. And now, subject to your approval and the town attorney's review, I think what's left is to execute that, which requires your signatures and those signatures notarized, and the signatures of my brother Matt and me, and, and having those notarized. So that's where we are tonight, and we're happy to answer any questions or, or comment further if you'd like.
Chris, I know that probably, well, I can't speak for Scott, but you're probably more in tune with this, you know, being in there. So I don't know if there's any specific comments, questions that you've had that you could share with all of us here tonight for Matt and Chris.
Really, no, I mean, I, I think we've gone over this several times as a board, and I've also gone over it with the subgroup that's been meeting with Matt and Chris. And I think it's very self-explanatory, the articles. And I think that, I believe that town council will probably give the go-ahead and we can maybe have a little get-together and sign off and get this, get it, get it notarized.
Right, because town council saw this as a warrant article, so they've sort of seen all the language as it is.
Looking for a final review.
I believe that both we as the town and the, the Sennys all believe there's likely to be a fourth modification at some point. This does not cover all the points we've been talking about, in some respects, I think it covered the points that were easily agreed to by both sides to, to get something moving. And, and, and so, I mean, I think this is good to move forward, I ready to sign when documents are ready.
Yep, same here.
Margaret, anything to add from the TA point of view?
I don't have anything in particular to add, but I, I am looking for a little bit of insight as to how the prior modifications were executed and filed, how did that work? I wasn't here at the time, so who, who did each, who filed, who filed these?
I can answer that if you'd like. In the past, with the, the original development agreement was actually signed at the town meeting on December ninth. December second, two thousand and nine, after the, the, the votes were cast and, and it was approved by the voters, we signed it together at the, the table when the town meeting was over. And then we took it to the registry and recorded it. In twenty thirteen and twenty seventeen, we signed it in the select board meeting room at a meeting just like this, where we had obtained town meeting approval, obtained town council sign off. And we physically sat at that table together, the large meeting table, and we executed it. And then in that case too, we took it to Worcester and recorded it on the land records.
Okay, so I think.
Good idea.
It sounds like a great idea, things were a little, little bit different back in twenty seventeen, where we were all meeting in person. But, um, so what I would propose then is as soon as we hear back from town council, and I'm sure that's coming imminently, I would ask the select board to come in and sign, I do believe their, the signatures need to be notarized, correct? So I would ask the select board to come in and sign, once the select board signs, Chris, Matt, you can assign, we'll take a copy of the document, keep it on file, and you would bring it to the registry, does that sound?
Yes, yes.
So I recommend that the select board execute the third modification of the development agreement, subject to town council's review and comment.
For a second.
All right, appreciate all the, the open conversation on this and plans going forward. Hearing no further questions, Stoneeye?
Hawkins Eye.
And Kefi.
All right, we have a plan, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
I'll stay on town council, make sure we get a response quickly.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you both.
All right, oh, that was easy peasy, all right. So swinging back to new business, we are down to approval of job descriptions for wiring inspector, plumbing and gas inspector.
Yes, so tonight I am asking the select board to approve the job descriptions that you have in your folder for one for electrical inspector, one for plumbing and gas inspector, subject to the personnel committee's approval, they're, they're gonna be getting these on Wednesday night. And the reason we want, well, we want these circulating, because we want job descriptions. And secondly, we also want to appoint alternates to these positions. And the alternates would be responsible for performing the duties in the absence of the primary inspectors, so we wanna get these rolling.
Margaret, was there anything that we need to, uh, maybe I'm making it up in my head, on fees? Does any of that need to be restructured?
So the fee structure, changes to the fee structure might be forthcoming, we are not ready to propose those yet. But I think we have all, we have seen and the heyday of the way the fees are structured right now has gone by. And we really do need to, we really do need to restructure the way the primary inspectors' fees are charged. Because it's become, it's frankly, it's, it's an administrative burden on both inspection services and the accounting offices. And we need to streamline this, so.
All right.
Motion?
Yes, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the job descriptions for the wiring inspector, plumbing and gas inspector.
So pending approval by personnel?
Pending approval by personnel.
Excellent, all right, motion and a second, Stoneeye?
Hawkins Eye.
Kefi.
There you go, Margaret.
Thank you.
All right, and then scooting down to our last new business is the special legislation petition for two additional section fifteen all alcohol licenses, those are mouthful, all right.
Yeah, this is more a special town meeting follow-up. So town meeting approved the board's petition for two additional section fifteen all alcohol licenses in town. And so this is a step that needs to be taken to get the petition off to the legislature. And Mary, thank you for putting together the letter that goes with the petition. And Mary, thank you for putting together the letter that goes with the petition.
Do you want a, a motion?
Yes, please.
Yes, please.
Motion to, um, approve, approve the two additional section five all alcohol license. License. Section, yeah, section fifteen, all alcohol licenses.
Second.
All right. Motion a second. Mary, thank you again for, uh, helping with that. Stone Eye?
Hawkins Eye.
Kefi.
All right. Off and running. All right. Uh, scooting down to board's questions and comments liaison updates. That was my go finger.
Do you have anything?
No, I, I have a couple of just things I'm just researching on my own, uh, but, but that's not an action for the board to take at this point.
Okay. So I also attended the traffic safety advisory committee, but Margaret covered that perfectly. So.
See, see, see previous update? There you go.
Um, I also attended the ZBA meeting on November tenth. Um, they had two hearings. The first hearing was nineteen Carter disputing the noise bylaw and the building commissioner's decision. Um, they essentially then voted, uh, to deny nineteen Carter's request to overturn the building commissioner's opinion in his letter. So the noise bylaw would apply. Uh, the second, go ahead.
They really decided that the bylaw that is a section about building permits applies all the time.
Well, it wasn't really clear, uh, that it was just for that reason. Cause there were other things that didn't have anything to do with construction that were also in the section. So, um, yes, that's what they decided. Any other?
I was gonna say, I was gonna say, I was in the audience and was extremely thankful when Lynn only announced that it was Chris and, uh, Richard. I'm like, woo! You know, she's like, we don't have any other town officials here. Um, so, you know, hats off to ZBA. Uh, there was quite a bit of discussion, um, on that. So I didn't, wasn't, I don't think it was a decision they entered into lightly. They went well beyond their time. And, um, that whole board just had questions and comments and.
Yeah. They also have had other things come to them, um, that had to do, I think, with, uh, that particular section of the bylaws.
Yeah.
Um, the other thing that they, uh, had a hearing on was two seventy-five Central Street, which is that older home that before you go under the bridge to Highland Commons, there's an older home on the right. It's up a hill.
Yep.
And they're working on a site plan approval for an internal business. Uh, that one was continued to December. They were very, they're very helpful with these people who have never been through this process before.
Is that Taylor's old house, Chris?
Yes.
On that corner? Yes, okay.
And I think that was really pretty much it. Um, Lynn asked me to help Denny to work on resolving an issue uh, with some money that, um, that probably came from being deposited for ZBA back in two thousand and three. So I've been in touch with Margaret about that. So that was about it. That's all I have. That was my liaison updates.
All right. Um, I just have a couple, uh, in the MMA, uh, weekly articles that come out. There were three in there that I didn't know, Margaret, if we should do anything with, in terms of doing anything with, just like passing stuff along. There was a, um, article in there about a, oh God, I wrote this two weeks ago and I can't even read it. Um, like a, a sign, uh, to sign on to a settlement for an opioid crisis. I guess you have to, um, like sign up for it. It came out, I wanna say, from the attorney general.
I've registered and I just received an email today on, on requesting a digital signature on that. So I'm looking it over and I will let you know.
Awesome. Um, and then I think we had covered this also in the MMA Weekly. Uh, there was an article in there about solid waste master plan, um, renovation. So I didn't know if the board of health gets the MMA Weekly and if it's just something that could be over to them for them to consider. And then.
We could probably share the E article, the article right from the digital.
All right. And then the last one, uh, and who knew, is an updated finance handbook. Who knew? Uh, then again, I don't know if it's just one of those over the wall to, uh, finance. We just wanna make sure that, you know, they have, they have any information at hand that we see coming across our desk. All right. And then the last one, I'm sure you'll all get a chuckle at. Two years ago, I was asked to be the master of ceremony for Berlin and Christmas and stood on, uh, stood across from the general store dressed as a blinking Christmas tree and waved. Uh, so the Lions Club has reached back out. Uh, costume is currently in development. So on December fourth, yet again, I will be standing out, giving a wave to the public. Um, as, uh, the Lions kick off their Berlin, uh, Christmas in Berlin. So.
And we have to show up in order to figure out what you're gonna dress as?
Maybe. If you do come by, could you make sure you like hang a cup of coffee out the window and give it to me on your way by? Cause you know, two years ago, it was stinking cold out there. So I don't know what the weather's gonna be like in a few weeks. But, uh, um, no, and you know what? And, uh, I just wanna say thank you to the Berlin's Lion Club. They put a nice thank you out to the highway folks, um, for getting those plugs fixed. So for everyone, you know, in this circle here who had a hand in that, um, the Berlin's Lion Club is extremely grateful, uh, to that. And with that, that concludes Peg's question and answer session. So, uh, we do have a need for executive session tonight. Let me bring this over. So I'm looking at you when I read it. Uh, the board will enter, uh, executive session, session pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, chapter thirty A, section twenty-one, A two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiation with non-union personnel or to conduct collective, collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel police chief contract. Uh, we will not be returning to public session and will adjoin by a verbal vote from executive session. Did I get that right? Yep, yes. All right. Uh, so we'll need a, so thank you to everyone who came tonight. Appreciate you. And, uh, Stone Eye?
Hawkins Eye.
Kefi.
All right. So we will see you in a bit. Stay safe and, uh, have a good week.